All right, it is 4:30 and I'd like to call over this meeting of the Telahoma Planning Commission. I look around and I determine everybody is here, so we do have a quorum to hold the meeting. And I will please ask Chris Roberts, Youth Minister at Telahoma First United Methodist Church, to lead us in the invocation and pledge allegiance. Would you all stand, please?
Let us pray. God of grace, we have gathered tonight to make important decisions for our community. Our prayer is, Lord, that you would grant that we may use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and the pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. And always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. At this time, let us say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if the commission would please come to pages two, three, is it four? Four, meeting minutes from the past meeting, review for additions, corrections, amendments. Motion in second to approve the minutes on pages, from pages two through four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The minutes are approved. Reports of officers and staff?
Staff doesn't have any reports this evening.
Very good. In the old business, we find we have a subdivision text amendment four. Lee, would you please explain this once more so everybody will understand what's going on?
What we discussed last meeting, this is to replace the requirements for two ingress, egress routes with, for connectivity with, doing the, or the connectivity index, measuring the links and nodes and dividing, dividing the links by nodes and coming up with a ratio. Purpose of it is for connectivity and movement of traffic through subdivisions, major subdivisions.
That would be like five or more lots or anything with new, like new streets or new utilities created in them. There is, the change was there allows, if there's a second ingress point, then it counts as two leaks, so gives them kind of a bonus for creating a second ingress, egress point. It's pretty much a summary.
In looking at this, there is one thing, you, we state the, you want to change the connectivity index ratio to 1.2.
That's what I'm proposing.
Proposing. And yet, when we were going through the explanations and the training, shall we say, of this, you made it fairly clear that the average index or standard index was 1.5.
1.4.
1.4?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I wondered if you would care to comment on why not go with 1.4, why we're going to 1.2? We're changing it from two ingresses or egresses and now we're using this index, why we not lowering it from what's typical?
It was just a way of getting the process in place, didn't want to make it too burdensome, but I mean, if the planning commission wants 1.4, I mean, we could change that in the, in the motion to increase it to 1.4.
What's the national average?
It's usually about 1.4 when they use it, but some of the other folks in the state, like City Columbia does 1.2, I believe that in Franklin, they use like a 1.5.
Have you talked about doing an either-or option with the ingress, egress versus 1.2, 1.4? At one point, did we talk about that last time?
What's?
Like, have it, they can either meet that or meet this requirement.
So, are you thinking like, they can either meet 1.4 or 1.2?
1.4 or have?
Or two entrances and egress.
Because do we ever get in a situation where it could be, they meet the 1.2, but there's only one way in and out?
Yes, there could be a situation where that occurred.
Well, I mean, did we change the other requirement lot less than a year ago?
It was last summer. It was last summer when we switched to the 1.2. And honestly, I mean, not 1.2, but to two entrances and egresses. And I understand that that could be considered an arbitrary kind of point because, but we had safety concerns about being able to get in and out of subdivisions in the case of emergencies like fire and tornado or anything else where one of the entrances might be blocked and we wouldn't be able to get out. And that's why we created that, that portion of.
We created that, and then we had the development out at the split that initially didn't meet that requirement, and we made them meet that requirement because it was, what was that on?
In our?
And now we're turning around and changing it, right?
That's what's being proposed, yes. To, and it's being proposed, understanding that the ratio number that we would use is a, for lack of a better word, a unitless number. In other words, it can be variable depending on how the nodes are calculated and things, so it's really not a, a fixed number per se, it is a, a unitless number.
But in the plan that we're looking at, we're offering, if you have two, as you'll point out, if you have two ingress, egress points, that counts extra.
Yes.
I think setting it at 1.4 would encourage the multiple entrances and exits. So, it would be my thought, if we're going to do away with requiring two entrances and exits, just go to the 1.4, thereby pushing to get the two entrances.
And we wouldn't be going as high as, say Franklin, who went to a 1.5 or something. It really exceeds that national average per se.
But you said Columbia is a 1.2?
Yeah, but they require two entrances though.
They require two entrances.
So, they have an either-or clause.
You ready for a motion?
Anytime.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we modify the proposed changes to go with the 1.4 index to?
And recommend this to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for final approval.
No, you guys make the final approval.
Oh, this is when we make the final, so we approve it right here. Okay. So, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, to modify the current request, requested wording changes to set the connectivity index at 1.4 and approve the wording in the subdivision requirements as that says. All of those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion, all right? Further discussion, yes.
Now, if we're, all of us are still up here next year, we're going to change this again to satisfy whoever, whoever's complained.
When that change was made last year, it was a mass change of our, and that's just one, it was, how many pages of that was that part of that, Lee, when we did the mass change of this?
Well, we just went with a whole new regu, regulations, and the other ones were so convoluted and self contradicting that it was just, you couldn't, we couldn't have straightened it, straightened it out, so it was.
Yeah, so it wasn't like we just looked at this in particular.
Yeah, there was a whole lot of clarifying wording that was done and confusing wording taken out and several things like that as well.
But, I mean, we as a board had to deal with the fallout from that.
Yes, you're correct.
That's just my point, you know, are we doing something today?
Yeah.
And I've seconded this motion, and now we're discussing it, are we doing something today that's going to cause equal hardship down the road? It may, but just be, you know, just so people know.
That was my question, is this more difficult for the people who are developing land or less? I would think it'd be, yeah.
More owners.
It depends.
Well, and yeah, that's where I was going.
It really does. I think you look at, the 1.4 is definitely going to make it harder, because there are ways that the 1.2 allows them to not make the lollipop as, you know, just the whatever, but it allows them a little flexibility.
Not have to have two.
Not have two, and there are several spots in town where development can happen and they can do that, but.
But to raise point, if you do 1.4, it may encourage them.
To put a second entrance, but.
But does 1.4 make it then easier than expecting an egress and an ingress? And then the other question I had on it, does that cause us to have safety concerns?
With what you're talking about, the reason why for the double ingress, egress is like, you look at a, one of some of the older subdivisions in town where there's just, that are very large, that only have one.
Yeah.
Entrance and exit point, and so tornado happens, tree goes down.
Yes.
I would say with the nodes and everything else, if it was a smaller subdivision, there would be easier ways for them to access that besides a second entrance. If it's, say it's a, it's got five, a little subdivision that has five to seven, I would think it'd be easier to access that, because you could see the house was on fire and they could get there. I don't know. But I think, I see what you're saying with the double ingress, it, there is that, but I just hope it's not putting that undue hardship on people who want to develop subdivisions so we can get people to move here.
One question I have, Lee, I know that we did utilize this for one subdivision last year that was done over on the northeast side of town where we had to require a second one. Has there been a lot of problems caused by the two entrance, egress situation?
We've had a couple of subdivisions that, that we've discussed with, with certain developers that had a couple of issues with it, we haven't went out in the urban growth boundary. I don't think they could have done as many homes, I don't know for a fact, but I'm thinking, because they had some soul issues, that they couldn't have got that many lots out there anyway, because there wasn't any sewers, so that's kind of, you know, all into, you know, how the soul is going to turn out. I don't believe it would have been able to support as many houses as they were proposing. We had a discussion about, you know, someone wanted to develop the old Pinnacle Point site that was once part of that, you know, I don't know, might have been somebody else's time, the Emerald Meadows, the Woodlands, they brought like three subdivisions in at one time, and somebody wants to develop the old site, or the site that would have been Pinnacle Point, we've discussed it, but then they've came back with a, a different design, they did have two, so I mean, and I don't know where they are on that, in that project, if they're planning on going forward with it or not.
So, so even when we required two, it didn't create a lot of undue duress on the builders that were doing?
Well, that would, that's a perspective, I mean, of course, they, you know, you're talking about more money because you're having to put in a second entrance, you can, you know, potentially lose a lot by putting that in, but the, you know, the whole purpose that we're doing it is for safety, it's not really for, you know, trying to make some, you know, increase, you know, revenue on a particular development.
Well, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, if we didn't create a whole lot of undue duress on the part of builders, and we didn't retard building this last year based upon the two, and this one, we know that even at a 1.4, we give them flexibility to, to have just what they need, other than, depending on the subdivision size and its connectivity. And there are other ways we saw of creating that connectivity.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's more than one way to, you know, to do a development. I mean, I, you know, you've got workloads, and so they don't want to, you know, maybe just don't have the necessary skills to be able to design a really creative type of development, but wanted to give them the opportunity or the chance to be able to do it, if, if they wanted to go and present something that would be, you know, a little bit out of the box, but yet this would still support, you know, a standard subdivision as well, too.
Any further discussion or questions? All right then, I'll call for the vote. All those, we have the motion and second on the floor to change the wording on the connectivity index, or the number on the connectivity index to 1.4, and to approve the wording in the subdivision requirements as printed otherwise. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Okay.
Please record.
No, and the motion passes. So, that's the old business, and now we'll go on to new business. And we have a site plan before us tonight. Site plans do, are not a public hearing.
Christian chief's just to hold one.
Is there anyone here who wishes to drive a public hearing on this? Otherwise, I'll, I'll review the site plan with you and we can go from there. Hearing none at this point, the site plan is on pages nine through, well, nineteen, so nine through nineteen, this is the site plan request.
Mr. Chairman, I just could go ahead and give.
Please explain, Lee.
Yeah, it's, it'll be at 1151 East Carroll, which is on the corner of East Carroll and South Roosevelt Street. They're proposing a 1,740 square foot convenience store with gas pumps, and they'll have landscaping and they've got the parking in. Staff gives it a favorable recommendation.
Staff, have any concerns about landscaping or anything?
Well, I mean, we've got the, you know, you've got the situation of where we needed to allow them, or request to allow them to put in landscaping instead of the sidewalk sections along East Carroll and South Roosevelt Street.
So, if we don't require them to do the sidewalking, are we going to have to issue a variance on that?
No, no, you have the, in the streets and sidewalk and curbing ordinance, it gives the planning commission latitude to give waivers on the sidewalk, at least on one side of a street that's required to have it.
And your reasoning for not putting the sidewalks in was?
For aesthetic purposes. And sidewalks right there probably wouldn't have been utilized or ever connected to, not in the near future anyway, more than landscaping would have been more beneficial to the city, especially a gateway street into the city.
Yeah, this is, this sits right on Highway 55, so.
But the site plan itself right now has sidewalk on it for that space.
Yes.
As opposed to putting on shrubbery.
Putting landscaping, yes.
So, do I have a motion yet before we begin heavy discussion?
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion in second to approve the request for the convenience store site plan as presented on here, and now we can begin serious discussion with the, with the council. Is there anyone here to represent the, very good, because I have a couple of questions.
Well, just amongst ourselves, before we start asking him stuff, you know, and I've brought this up more than once, this town is dotted with sidewalks, no sidewalks, sidewalks, no sidewalks, which looks tacky, you know? There's no uniformity, you know, and it may be years before sidewalks ever get down to that point, but, you know, when do, you know, when do we decide and who decides? When sidewalk, is it us? Is this our purview?
Yeah, you guys have it.
I mean, it seems like there's a lot of sections in town, even on, on the main drag, where you'll have a sidewalk and then it ends. That looks stupid.
And is unsafe.
No, you know, are we doing that with this?
Yeah, my question about it was if we take the side, and one of the points that was brought up was the utilization of the sidewalk, would it even be used? Because it would be right beside Highway 55, and how many people would walk or whatever along a sidewalk along Highway 55? There was that question that came up.
Well, there are sidewalks probably to the hands-on science center, I'm not, I haven't been out there.
That's the opposite side of the street.
Right, but I mean, there are sidewalks in areas there.
Yep, that's true. In fact, I think there's a sidewalk just a little closer to town on that side of the street.
You know, if I was a magic unicorn and had a fairy wand, I would make, put sidewalks everywhere, but it costs money.
It does.
Mr. Chairman, in this, in this instance, there are no sidewalks.
How there?
In that area. If there is an option to put aesthetically looking trees, landscaping, if you will, I'd certainly, if I were coming into the town from that, from Manchester, if this was coming into town, I would look at the aesthetics of, of the landscaping as opposed to whether there was a sidewalk there or not, that was, that was never used on. In this case, I'd certainly think that landscaping is an option, is a better option than a sidewalk right there, that wouldn't be used.
Probably so, I'm just saying we should, we just.
You're right.
Sidewalks, no sidewalks, sidewalks, no, we have no uniformity, in my opinion.
And it's sad that it's an either-or.
Since there's, since there's no sidewalks there now, we could be uniform and not put sidewalks there and put landscaping in.
And then down the road, if we grow, or when we grow, or I hope we grow, I'd like to see a sidewalk all the way to freaking Manchester, or, you know, like a bike trail or something. But like I said, if I was, had a magic wand, all this is getting out and talking about money, but, you know, they have that Billy Goat Trail from where, Montegoal to Swanee, that was in the old railroad bed, just a thought. But landscaping's better than having a bridge to nowhere.
Well, because then you get safety issues when you start creating a sidewalk that just ends.
For who?
For who is walking.
Yeah, there also has to be the question of.
They have more problems than, than safety.
Yeah, and then there's also the question of, okay, if you put a sidewalk in, who's responsible for the maintenance of it and all that sort of stuff along the way, you know?
Someone that's.
Yes.
Can address the issues somewhat.
Well, I'm Kenny Sadler from Manchester, Tennessee, but this has been discussed quite a bit, the sidewalk issue, and I have talked to the owner about it, and he is fine with putting in the planting versus the sidewalk, he'll do whatever the city wants him to do. So, he will put in trees and shrubs in lieu of the sidewalk, if that's what, so if there were a motion for it, it would probably need to include that, since we do have on the plan that it is a sidewalk. I don't have the authority to show it any other way, so y'all are the ones with the authority to put that in the motion, that you would rather have the trees and shrubs in lieu of sidewalk, but the owner has agreed to do that.
Was the issue of the entrance off of Roosevelt Street taken care of?
I believe we've addressed all the issues with access, we've gone through TDOT, actually the ride-in off of Roosevelt was a recommendation from TDOT. The additional driveway that you'll see that's 156 feet away from the Roosevelt intersection was also a recommendation by TDOT, so we have, we have discussed that in detail with the city and the state.
Very good.
On access to the site.
So, that's been taken care of. Then the only other question I really have is, because one of my kind of pet peeves right now is stormwater drainage. And since your drives that are going to be, probably the major drives for entrance and egress are going to be going out to Highway 55, how are you controlling the stormwater so that it doesn't flood Highway 55 and create a traffic hazard?
Yeah, well, there's certainly no flooding going to occur from this site, you know, just with the size of the site alone, but, but we're actually adding grass areas to compensate for the asphalt areas, the entire site now is asphalt, so we're actually taking out asphalt in a fair number of areas there and replacing asphalt with grass. So, we're ending up with a better situation than we normally would, where we're usually taking out grass and adding asphalt, you get an increase there, but in this case, we're doing the reverse, so, so it makes it work out a little better in this case.
Scott, is the asphalt permeable, so to speak?
Just very slightly.
Very slightly?
It has, for example, completed pervious is a factor of one, asphalt's 0.95, so it essentially is, is pervious.
Consider it pervious.
So, what TDOT does is they review drainage very closely. As, as Mr. Sadler stated, the bulk of this site is asphalt now, they look at the increase in the rate of runoff off the site, and they have not required any additional stormwater detention because it balances. They look very closely at making sure that any sheet blow-off of the driveway areas doesn't get out into the travel lane, so that it doesn't cause a hazard there, so that's part of the permit process that they have worked through.
Okay, that, that relieves my concerns about that.
Across the street from Roosevelt, from this side, is another convenience store, right?
It is, and they have wide open access. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving the request for the convenience store site plan, we.
I believe those have been made yet, has it?
Yeah, we have a motion in second. Lee, we decide this one, not the mayor and alderman, so they're voting to approve it or not.
Do we have to change it with the changes?
Yeah, we talked about the greenery or which one, how was the motion I read, was it with?
The motion did not include the greenery.
Yeah.
You'll have to make an amendment, you'll have to.
A motion to amend it, is that what we have to do?
We have to amend it, and then we have to go back.
Vote on the motion, yeah, we'll vote on the amendment and the motion, so.
I make a motion that we amend this plat to let the developer substitute greenery and shrubbery instead of the sidewalk.
I second it.
I have a motion in second to amend the site plan request to include shrubbery and grass and things as opposed to the sidewalks in the front. Those in favor of approving that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The amendment is carried, now we vote on the motion itself. Now we vote on the motion itself. So the motion itself with the amendment to add the shrubbery, greenery, landscaping and such instead of the sidewalk, and approve the final site plan. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Site plan's approved. The next one will be a public hearing, and this public hearing will be on zoning map amendment request 227, a request to rezone approximately 50 acres at 330 Ledford Mill Road from Agricultural A to R1 Low Density Residential. The request is Mr. Jim Walters.
Walters, waters.
Walters, I'm sorry. Request begins on page 20 and covers till, let's see, it looks like 28. Okay? This is to be a public hearing. Anyone caring to address this commission on this subject will be allowed to do so. You'll come to the podium, state your name, address, and then you can make your statements. You'll be allowed two minutes to speak each. If you are the one speaking and the next one up wants to defer their minutes to you, they must come up and give their name and address, and let us know they want to defer their minutes, and you will be allowed those two minutes. So I am opening now the public hearing on this subject. Now give an explanation, Lee.
The request is to rezone the 50 acres from agricultural to low-density residential. Their, the land use plan calls for that area to be low-density residential as well. That was provided in the agenda packet. Area of concern, the plan that was submitted with it, its concept plan, is, you know, is fine, what was, you know, that wouldn't be binding, so it could, you know, somebody else could bring something else in at the property sales or, you know? And within the amount of acreage they have there, there are, you know, they've got water and sewers, so there could be a possibility of 180 lots put on, you know, new lots carved out of that large tract there. And it's kind of concerned for Ledford Mill Road to have that many new homes or new lots on there. I mean, you would be looking at over 1,700 new trips daily just by that one development. Staff was recommending that we postpone it, let us look at it and bring it back next meeting with a more, do some research and bring back a recommendation based on that research.
How many lots are on the proposed development?
Fifty.
But what you're saying is if it's, the whole property's sold, somebody else could develop it.
And you ain't put a lot more in there. I think it's been up to like 181 lots.
Not unless we approve it.
Yeah, but you remember, if it meets all our regulations, then it gets into a situation if we open up...
So why do we have a planning commission? That was bothering me.
Well, and if you look at the planned subdivision that's presented here, this is one of those that presents exactly what I was concerned about before. Because if you look, he's created a tree section here with only one entrance and egress.
Again, that's just a concept, so he's not looking to get it approved for that plat.
Yeah, but that's what he's got as a proposed thing right now. And then he has another larger segment of subdivision over here with only one entrance and egress coming off of it. So this is one of those where, and I don't know, Lee, what was the actual nodes number we came up with?
Oh, I mean, that scored about, well, it scored 1.4.
See, so even with our 1.4 right now, they could develop this, and you would have to, basically, because it's being treated as one subdivision, it all counts together, so it scores a 1.4. And yet you've basically got two separate subdivisions with only one entrance and egress on either one of them. So I have concerns about that, but...
Ledford Mill Road, the traffic that would be coming from this, that was, would you, if we postpone it, would that be something you guys would be looking into and come back with?
Yes, it would be, you know, trying to look at what the impact would be to everything.
Because I keep hearing about the road there anyway and how it's got issues, so...
And, you know, we've got a lot of development planned in that area.
Yeah.
We've built industrial blocks, so there's a lot of things to take into consideration when looking at development along the street.
What are we going to look at if we delay it a month?
Well, we might come back with a recommendation and maybe doing a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to create a different residential district with larger lots required, you know, minimum lots, so it would decrease the amount of...
You are?
I'm Jim Walters.
Jim Waters.
And, you know, I hired an engineer, I don't know anything about him. And I just told him to go out there and draw what he thought would be feasible for the city of Tallahassee.
I understand.
And I have, and if you notice, there are some really large lots in this subdivision. And I paid a man $16,000 to drain it to make sure it's drained. And, you know, if I sell it, I'll sell it with 50 something, whatever the lots are, you know? And that's what I expect whoever's going to develop it would develop it, but that's not for me to say. But anyway, I thought he did a good job. He's an engineer, was recommended highly by some folks here in Tallahassee. And the entry question about the roads, I built the road to the big section, and it's built real, it's 50 feet wide and six feet deep of red dirt. And it's really the only way you can get into the backside of the property, because I built a lake. You notice there's a lake in the middle. And then, of course, that comes off of Ledford Smith Mill Road. And you would have to interest it there, I guess, if you did it some way, I don't know. But, you know, I asked you to approve it. I'd like to move on with this thing. I used to farm it, and I've got to go to farm, and I'm not going to raise cattle there anymore, but I used to. But I want to help Tallahassee, and I want to do the right thing for Tallahassee. But, you know, I don't think I've ever seen anybody putting 180 lots in there. Gosh almighty. It looked pretty good to me, and matter of fact, the top of the lane, about it, that's kind of what he and I came up with, the size of those lots, because I didn't have a pool. So, anyway, I wouldn't want to make them any bigger. And I really wouldn't want to make them any smaller, to be the truth.
Would us postponing this for one month to do some further studies and things and be able to come back next month to make a decision, would that put an undue hardship on you?
No, sir, no, sir, it really wouldn't matter. I just want to do what you guys think's right, and...
Well, we looked at Lee for guidance as far as...
At least, Lee knows what he's... He told me the other day I could get 181 lots, I looked at him like, oh my goodness. And, you know, it'd probably be more beneficial to me to sell it that way, because I could get more, I could sell it for a lot, probably make a lot more money, so whatever Lee comes up with is what I'm going to go with.
Okay.
All right. We do not have a motion yet.
We're still in a public hearing.
Well, I'd like to say something, because I appreciate you guys serving on this board, because I used to sit up there, that's where you're sitting, and I know how much you get paid. But I appreciate y'all serving, and I'll work with Mr. Lawson any way he wants to. So I feel that he's a very confident person, so next time it'll be fine with me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One point that I serve as a liaison from the city to the airport board.
Yes.
And I know that, and this is right across the street from where you have the air park there that's being developed, it's a commercial, commercial air park there. And it's right at the end of the 246 runway.
I don't want to speak to where it's not. It's a long ways from the end of the runways, because I've...
That's a taxiway, that's not the main 24.
I've cut that, I've cut that, hey, I've got too much hay after to know. It's not even close to the end of the runways, because I had to always dodge the airplanes.
Yeah, so...
It just, you know, you have the air park right across the road, right? But it's not even close to an approach zone.
I know that postponing this one month...
You can ride out there and look at it.
Would allow me an opportunity to discuss this with the airport, with their terms and their board, and that I've served that role, I feel an obligation to represent them on this commission as well as you. So thank you for the opportunity to do that.
That'd be fine.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak to this tonight? If not, then I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we postpone the vote until the next planning commission on Monday, August 19.
Second.
I have a motion and second that we postpone the vote, at which time, because I had no one come forward and, from the public, I will once again ask this to be a public hearing. We will give the public a chance to speak to it at that time as well. All those in favor of the motion to postpone, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We will postpone until the following meeting. Next public hearing, zoning map amendment 228, a request to rezone 2.44 acres at 611 East Monroe Street from C2 to I2. C2 being general commercial, I2 being industrial.
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial. As presented on pages 29 to 32?
35.
35?
36.
What happened here? I got the recommendation right in the middle. How'd that happen? Okay, all right. Yeah, this is all part of it. 36, 37. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, can I go ahead?
Make an explanation, Lee.
2.4 acre lot, wanted to be heavy industrial. The land use plan that's adopted calls for the area to be used like as heavy industrial. There's heavy industrial zone lots already across the street. The proposed use would fit in that district. It's a distribution and warehousing facility for a vending machine company would, is the, would be the use, and staff gave it a favorable recommendation.
Okay, so the same rules, this is a public hearing. For anyone wishing to speak to this topic, and I will open the public hearing for people. Do we have someone representing the requister? Anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing no one come forward to speak to this issue, I'll proceed to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request for this rezoning from commercial to industrial. Any discussion for the commission? Hearing none, I'll proceed to the vote. All those in favor, this will be a favorable recommendation to the board, mayor and alderman on this request. Those in favor of sending a favorable recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The recommendation is made. The next thing on the list in public hearings is a zoning text amendment, 219, amendment to the zoning ordinance with the following, adding the term shipping container in Article II of the definitions and replacing Section 503, locations of accessory buildings with proposed Section 503 accessory uses and structures. Lee, will you please explain?
Okay, the first one is to have a definition for shipping containers. One of the regulations that is proposed is not to allow them as being used as accessory structures in residential zone districts. And the second one is to, it's actually reestablishing the accessory uses structure section from the previous ordinance into the current ordinance. Right now, it just addresses the location of accessory buildings, so it leaves a lot of things, a lot of situations unaddressed by the ordinance that we come across on a daily basis. So the purpose of the amendment would be to address those, that issue, and be able to give better guidance to staff and to the citizens by listing appropriate accessory uses with, along with the principal uses. But the locations of the accessory buildings would be the same as it is written right now in the ordinance.
So basically, the first thing we do is define a shipping container as the kind of containers that sit on 18-wheelers and travel around and are used for shipping.
Or railroads.
Or railroads or anywhere else like that.
Well, you can see the proposed definition on page 41, it's at the top.
Now, if we do this issue... Will this be effective on places where these, this condition already exists? Are we making it effective on them?
When you talk about people that have put storage units on their residential lot?
Like stores or...
No, this wouldn't affect anything in commercial zone district. It would just be in residential districts as far as limiting the use of...
So this is like somebody puts one next to their house?
Right.
If they ever would, although I can't figure out.
Well, you'd be surprised.
But would apply to existing?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Moving.
Yes.
So they're wanting, where are they wanting to put this?
Excuse me?
Where are they wanting to put this? Up front, to the side, for moving?
Are you talking about if they have a shipping container? You know, we've had some people put it in the front yards and left those iPod containers, just left them there. And they were, you know, they're not supposed to be there for permanent use, but they were leaving them there, and we had a whole situation of going to the administrative hearing officer and everything.
Okay, so the standard rules apply. This is going to be a public hearing with all the rules as stated, so I will open the public hearing. For anyone who wishes to speak to this issue, please come to the podium. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close this public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve the text amendment.
Second.
And recommend approval to the board of mayor and alderman. I'm sorry, you've got to say that. I can't say it for you.
Move to approve the text amendment, propose this to the board, mayor and alderman for approval.
And you seconded it, Jimmy? No? You did, Scott did. Okay, so I have a motion and second to approve this text amendment to the zoning requirements and send a favorable recommendation to the board of mayor and alderman. Any discussion from the commission?
Yeah, Lee, tell me what we're doing here. It's still sort of...
Well, you're adding, you're creating a... Well, you're adding, you're creating a definition for shipping containers. We're creating a regulation that doesn't allow them to be used as accessory structures in the residential zone, and then we're adding accessory uses back into the zoning ordinance, which the same, excuse me, the same section that was in the previous zoning ordinance to address accessory uses and to allow accessory uses that are appropriate to the principal uses in specific districts.
So in other words, like outbuildings and things like that?
Well, that's already been addressed with accessory building regulations. This gets into actual accessory uses and which ones are appropriate with principal uses.
Okay. Other questions? Then we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving the text amendment as printed and sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, that's his own text amendment. Any other new business to come before us tonight on the, in the planning commission? I don't believe we have any. So, I have a motion to adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and second to close the planning commission meeting. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is closed. We will move to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we have no unfinished business, but we have new business to come before us in the request of a variance.
Mr. Chairman, you gotta approve the minutes from the last order.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry. Approve the minutes, okay? Which are on page 44. So take a look and. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting previous minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Minutes are approved. Now we can go on to the variance request, a request for variance from zoning ordinance Section 503.3, location of accessory buildings to allow a 100-square-foot accessory building to be located in the front yard and partly inside the East Grundy Street right-of-way. Inside the right-of-way, okay. At 210 East Grundy Street. The applicant is Ms. Cynthia Kenny, Director of Good Samaritan of Tallahhoma. The documents begin on page 45 and carry to the end, I believe. Don't they, Lee?
Yes.
Okay, so this will be a, this will be a public hearing on this subject. Anyone wishing to speak to that? The rules that apply to the planning commission will apply to this public hearing, and I will open this public hearing for comment. Oh, excuse me. Make an explanation.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I always should ask that.
You read it, and we've looked over it, and unfortunately, the staff cannot give it a favorable recommendation. So we give it an unfavorable recommendation.
An unfavorable recommendation. All right.
One further thing. This is more than a request for a variance because it's a request to erect a building on a public right-of-way. So it also involved, if there were favorable action on this, a request for servicing of that property so the building could be built there.
I see no request to service.
No, it's not here, but I said it would involve that if you would approve that. The variance, the ordinance providing the variances does not address at all variances that would also utilize public rights ways, any kind of thing.
All right. State your name and your address for the record.
Good afternoon. I am Cynthia Kenny, and I am the Executive Director of Good Samaritan of Tallahhoma. I had planned a PowerPoint presentation, but apparently that's not going to happen.
Our computer doesn't interface with your VGA cable.
Oh, okay. We don't have a wireless yet, sir.
You might have.
Yeah.
If you want, I have one. Dr. Blanks, I have one memory stick. If you just want to put them on your computer.
That's okay. I don't take any outside devices on my computer. Sorry. You could be Jesus, and I wouldn't let you do that.
Okay. I believe you have some, Lee, you in the packet, there's some pictures?
Yeah, I put everything in my packet.
Are.
I said I put everything in that you submitted.
Okay. Well, we'll just try to fly by the seat of our pants then, and hopefully my dialogue will match up to your photos. How many of you are familiar with the Good Samaritan of Tallahhoma? And what, and what we do? So you know that we were chartered back in 1985 by Tallahhoma Churches of all denominations in order to work together to provide for the area needy. We have a ministry and a thrift store, and our ministry allows us to distribute food. We provide relief aid to those in need for utilities and rent and medicine. We have a dignity campaign, which we provide basic cleaning and personal hygiene supplies. We have a baby boom project, which allows us to provide diapers, wipes, baby food, formula, clothes. And we also have an animal harbor program, which allows us to provide pet food, cat and dog food, to the distressed families. We, our thrift store is open from 9:00 to 2:00, Tuesday through Friday, and 9:00 to 3:00 on Saturday. And we sell usable household items. Clothing that is donated, we can sell for a dollar apiece. And the main thing is that the thrift store proceeds significantly help fund our ministry programs. And this is where the problem begins. Currently, our after-hours donation closet poses a health and safety risk to the public and to our employees and volunteers. This is because the closet is not large enough to hold the multitude of clothing, shoes, sheets, blankets, and other donations we receive during after-hours when we are closed. The following photos show our current process and the capability to accept our after-hour donations. I think, Lee, is the first one, the Google Earth?
First one, the attachment A1 is just in the building.
That we're proposing?
Yeah, the place review, page 58 would be, start from the currently paying donations, and then page 59 would show another view of that. That would be attached to speed three and four.
I, let me do this. This is the, I don't know if you have this in your packet. It's the Google Earth. Okay? And this Google Earth photo with the property lines in the center of Grundy Street from the TNGIS Property Viewer Map data, looking at Good Samaritan property lines. Then the next two photos are looking down East Grundy, and I think you may have this. It looks like this, where you see the public sidewalk and parking on the left, and the after-hours donation sign on the right indicating where to place donations. Then the next three photos are approaching the donation area where the closet is located, and the donation closet is approximately, and I think you have this in your packet, it is two feet by five feet wide, and this is kind of the door opening to the closet. And then this is the inside of our collection closet. Then the next three photos shows what happens during the night or after we are closed. And you'll see a photo that looks like this. And another one that looks similar. These are donations that are left after hours. And this shows that we have people who take the bags out of the donation closet, rip them open to steal the clothes, or steal the clothes, and then they sell the clothes for other purposes. We have found, in the morning, we go and clean this area up. We have found drug needles, trash, fecal matter, urine-soaked clothes, either human or animal. And at times, we have found homeless people asleep in the closet or on the front porch on ripped-open bags of clothing. The next two photos, and you may not have these, will show bags of clothing that have been dragged to the back of the building, our building, and ripped open. In addition, we have had, found bags of clothing in the back of the offices facing Lincoln Street. Such as this. We have received more than once phone calls from Dr. Long's office saying, "You need to come over and pick up this mess." He's got a nice green area in the back of his office, and often bags of clothes have been ripped open and torn apart, and there's a nice mess in his yard. They're often found around their trash cans in that alleyway. Also, we have picked up clothing from the dumpster at First Presbyterian Church. To alleviate this public and employee safety and health issue, we have looked at several options based upon constraints of our building, location, parking, and public access. We have researched many clothes collection bins and containers, which are very expensive, and basically, they're not large enough to accommodate the number of donations we receive. In discussion with Watson Barnes, we have been made available to us a 10-by-10 outdoor shed shown in these photos, and I believe you do have these. We would modify this shed to include a drop chute for all of the clothing bags, shoes, and the like. We are also willing to paint the exterior of the shed and put plantings around it so that it looks more acceptable than a shed sitting on a front lawn. I want to point out, in addition, I have called our local police department, and you can see they have made many trips to Good Samaritan because of the theft that has occurred. So, why this is important is that because these donations allow us to support the community in many ways that you are not aware of. I just want to run a couple of numbers by you. That being that we directly helped 4,570 people and 1,871 families in the past year. The Good Samaritan support activities in fiscal year ending May 31, 2019. We provided food to 972 families. We provided funds to pay utility bills for 259 families. We provided funds to help with housing expenses to 87 families. We provided personal care items, basic cleaning supplies, baby gifts, and pet food to 553 families. In addition, Good Samaritan, for the second year in a row, supported or sponsored Another Day of Hope, which helped 276 persons this year with services and food and clothing. We work side by side with Tallahhoma Post Office, and we helped them during the National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive. Currently, I'm working with Tallahhoma Police Department. We are working on their emergency food pantry program. We work with Coffee County Senior Center, Tallahhoma Daycare Center, Tallahhoma Housing Authority, Shepherd's House. We help the residents at Everlasting Journey. We also support Veterans and Family Courts Services of Coffee County. In summation, we would be grateful for you to approve our request for this variance so we can continue to serve those in need in our community. Thank you. I don't know if any of you have any questions?
I have a few. You know, I think y'all do wonderful work.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, the problem is that, you know, the problem y'all are experiencing is not, in my opinion, going to be solved by building right there. Wherever you put your building, it's not going to change the nefarious action of bad people. Whether you put it there, you put it in the back, wherever, they're still going to be getting in there if you have a chute or whatever. But for us to allow that to go there, then, you know, right now, is the pickup spot up front or around back?
It's around, it's on the front. It's in the front.
You know, to me, just as a first blush of this, I would put the pickup spot in the back and put fences or not let them drop off at night. You know, I don't, I don't think it is our, our job to figure out where the pickup spot is, but you're making us decide whether or not you can have that up front. And, you know, what we're getting from our director is, they're not giving a recommendation for that. Because we're having, we'd have to give a variance for it to be on city property, and then we'd have to, we would have to allow that to be surplus, right?
Yes.
I don't know if we want to get into that. You know, if we could get that building around back or something, I don't have a problem with that, but where it's standing right now is the problem. Commissioners, help me.
I think everyone on this board, if they've ever had any association with Good Samaritan, they would be very, very supportive of your organization.
Yes.
That being said, we're being asked to do, we're being asked to make a variance. If we make a variance for you to do this, it turns out we had a request for almost a very similar situation just down the street from you. We turned that down. And I looked for precedent setting, for one thing.
Right.
This would be a precedent. I look at how fitting, how fitting that would be to have a shoe, an accessory building, sitting in your front yard, and actually sitting on city property. While I am very supportive of Good Sam, I could not support this. You did a great presentation.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else from the, from the outside who wants to speak? Give us your name. Give us your name and address.
John Paris. Address 210 East Grundy Street. I'm one of the volunteers there, and I'm one of the ones that shows up at 8:30 in the morning and goes out front and goes through all this stuff and goes around back and dumps it. And I think the real issue that we're talking about here is how do we, one, keep the public safe, in which, as she had mentioned, homeless people go up there and steal, do stuff like that. I've actually gone up there and almost get stuck by a drug needle, okay? What we are proposing is a lockable one. Our current one is not lockable. So, that picture that you have is a 10-by-10 shed with a roll-up door on the back that locks, and then on the front would be a drop chute. So, nobody can get inside. They can't grab the bags. They can't take them anywhere. Then, that would allow us the next morning to unlock the roll-up door, take it around back. The reason we haven't put it around back is our gates are all locked, so there's no way for anybody to drop them off at night. There's no room on the sides because there's Poplar Alley on one side and the property line on the other side. There's none in the rear of the building because that's an easement across the back between the Good Samaritan and where the offices are behind that. So, the ideal place would be up front where the sign currently is that says after-hours donation. To place it there, it would be partly on the property and then over the setback easement. It's not going to be out in front near the sidewalk, okay? And currently, someone at some point already gave approval because if you look at the front of the thrift store, the thrift store awning and porch and cover encroaches on that easement already. So, we're not doing something that hasn't already been done. It's not something new, okay? So, we looked at it and said this was what we thought was the best to do. Thank you for your time.
If not, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion on this request for variance.
I'll make the motion to deny the request.
What's our options? If we don't deny it, it's approved? What do we have to do?
No, if you... If you... He's made a motion to deny the request.
Correct.
If nobody seconds it, dies for a second, but somebody has to make a motion to approve the request. You either got to deny or approve.
How do we get into discussion phase?
A motion has to be on the floor. I have to have a motion in second on the floor to get into discussion phase.
Seconds, the menial, then we can discuss.
Can it not be changed? Like, I'm looking at this picture on page 67, and it looks like it's going lengthwise forward as opposed to turning it 90 degrees.
Well, they're so close to the sidewalk, they don't have anywhere else to put it.
Like, you can't go...
It will still extend on... Into city property. You see the...
Regardless which way?
If you look at the red dotted line, the red dotted line is the property line.
That way, and that house is right. You know, they're taking it.
Okay.
They actually... They technically don't meet the setbacks of the property line requirements right now, but that's not the subject here.
Well, it's a non-conforming building. It's been there for...
Yeah.
It was a funeral home before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't spend that forever.
And... But one thing I would note very quickly is, as I looked at the cars that are parked on the front of your building, you're actually... This is not an easement. This is a right-of-way, which means it's there for a street, okay? And it's supposed to be kept clear as a street would be kept clear. We are... By parking cars in the front, you are actually violating the right-of-way law in the city by parking in the front. And the reason that it doesn't ever come up is because there's about half the stores and other things around that area that have that very same problem. So, we would have to be ticketing cars all day long if we were doing it, and we're not going to do that, obviously. But we need to make clear that this is a road right-of-way. It is not an easement on someone's property here. To do this, we would have to surplus the property, and probably it would have to be surplused in a way that would take up a full strip along the front. And understand, if the property were surplused, that doesn't mean you get it. Whoever buys it, gets it, and somebody else could buy it out from under you. So, you would still stand in danger of not being able to do anything at that point. So, I want to make sure you understand all of the rules and regulations that come into being in this thing. Can the property be surplused? That's up to the city. They have to decide that. We don't do that.
Well, you would be given a recommendation.
We would be asked to give a recommendation to whether we would want to.
Well, just like Ray said, we... Y'all had the same issue with the property right around the corner that had the appliances.
Yes.
And y'all had a not favorable recommendation on that or favorable?
No.
We denied the request for variance.
But it came to the city board. We voted on it, correct?
We have to vote on our deny.
The surplus request came to you guys.
And we voted that down.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know the kind of work you do, and I... For the most part, I support your work, but this is not the solution to your problem, I don't think. I think there has to be another way to approach this. And I see... I see other buildings at the back of the property that I'm not sure what they're used for, but possibly, could you figure out, for example, at the back of the property, there seems to be a small building similar to the 10-by-10...
It's not our job.
Right in the corner there is... Would it be possible that you could do that? I don't know. It's not our job to tell you what way to do it, but that's one way you could possibly think of of getting the job done.
Okay.
Or whatever.
We want to do it, but we had sent a bad presentation.
Yes.
I know.
Any further discussion from the Commission? All right, we will proceed to vote on the motion to... How does it have to be ordered, Lee? Is it send an unfavorable recommendation?
It was just be a... It was the motion to deny.
Okay. We have a motion to de... And second, to deny the request for variance as requested. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The variance in this case is denied. With nothing to come before, I entertain a motion to adjourn the zoning and appeals and move to close.
Second.
Motion in second to close the Board of Zoning and Appeals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. We are adjourned.